Could you bow with me, please? Heavenly Father, we are so grateful that you awakened us this morning to start our day and that you led us here to this place to make a difference in so many lives. Father, we're grateful that you've equipped us with the knowledge and the desire to do your will toward your people, leading God our lives like never before as we make decisions about the management of this college. Father, we graciously thank you for every family represented here. We ask that you do and remind them of your work in their lives throughout the day. We love you, Lord, and most importantly, you love us. These blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Do you want me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Quorum is present and the meeting is being recorded. First item is to consider the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of December 14th.
Motion to approve the minutes as published?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to the question of the minutes. Is there a discussion, question? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you much. Next item is opportunities for members of the public to suggest any topics in relationship to the agenda or things that the board needs to be aware of. Anyone like to speak to the board? Seeing none, hearing none, we move on to the chancellor's report.
Thank you, Reverend Towers. First item, Dr. Robin Garrett, the college's vice chancellor for academic and student success and our chief academic officer, was selected to serve on the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Workforce Education Stakeholder Group. Dr. Garrett is going to lend her knowledge and expertise in workforce education to the work of that particular group. So, Dr. Garrett, thank you for agreeing to serve, and we know that you will help to make positive changes in workforce education for all of our students in Texas. Would you like to say a few words about the work that you're doing?
The stakeholder group has not met as of yet. We'll be meeting in the beginning of February, and it'll be at the set of coordinating board. I was very honored to be nominated to participate on this stakeholder committee to help the coordinating board move in the new direction for workforce education as it relates to Houseville 8. I've served on WECOM for I don't know how many years, but, and that was all about the courses that we have the options to offer across the state of Texas and allow transferability between community colleges for the workforce level. This stakeholder group will advise the coordinating board on how to continue to implement that, but align it with what the needs are for Houseville 8. So I look forward to the work that we're going to do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Anyone question? Thank you, ma'am.
Senate Bill 17. As you know, during the 88th regular legislative session, Governor Abbott signed into law Senate Bill 17, which prohibits certain initiatives relative to diversity, equity, and inclusion. The law went into effect on January 1 of 2024, not September 2023. And so by way of update, wanted to let you know that the administration, in concert with our general counsel, excuse me, we thoroughly reviewed the statute with existing campus programs and policies to ensure our current and ongoing compliance. And so the purpose of me sharing this with you is because the legislature does hold you responsible for ensuring our compliance, so I wanted to let you know that we are good to go there. We're following the law.
Thank you.
And next, we have a few pictures, which will be presented by Dean Bach and Dean Starkey.
You forgot. I forgot one.
I apologize, Gus. Forgive me. Mr. Harmson, would you please come forward and introduce the newest member of our administration?
It happens occasionally.
Does it? Okay.
Well, I wanted to introduce and welcome Gus Anderson as our new associate vice chancellor for facilities and construction. He started with us on November 30th, comes to the college with 33 years of experience in facilities, property management. He's worked in the fields of education, healthcare, commercial, residential operations. Some of his experience includes the areas of construction, plant operations, general maintenance, custodial, landscaping, grounds, pest control, warehouse, fleet operations. Most recently, Mr. Anderson was the facilities manager for the city of DeSoto. Prior to that, he was a director of facilities for or at Responsive Education Solutions. He was the facilities manager at Tarrant County College District. He was the director of facilities at Sugar Land Rehabilitation Hospital. He was the director of building services at Purdue Northwest in Indiana. And then he's also worked on various contract services, both Crawford Healthcare as well as Airmark. So, wanted to introduce him to the board today. You may have already met him, but again, I wanted to welcome him to Central Texas College.
Say if you want.
May a few words. I'll just say thank you for the opportunity, and I'm glad to be here and be a part of the CTCD family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Welcome to the seat.
Now our pictures of the month.
Good afternoon. I'm happy to share photos of two recent events held at CTC. The first photos are from faculty in service, which was held on Tuesday, January the 9th. In-service is held twice per year, in August and in January, where we welcome back the faculty and update them with information to start the semester. Dr. Carter welcomed the faculty in the morning, as you can see in the upper right, and then in the afternoon, she provided a wrap-up at the end of the day session. The morning sessions consisted of updates from college leaders and an excellent keynote message from faculty member Chance Heberling, and that was titled, "AI: Exploring Critical, Ethical, and Creative Uses in Teaching and Learning." The afternoon included eight sessions across two time periods where faculty could select from sessions such as executive functioning skills impacting college students, understanding and addressing unique challenges of veterans in the classroom, retention alerts, and forgiveness. And the next slide. Oh, magic. The second event was the Basic Peace Officer Course Graduation held on January the 12th, which was a Friday. You may recall that we offer four police academies per year. Three of those meet during the day, but the alpha group that you see here meets during the evenings and on some weekends for the better part of a whole year. Here you see the seven graduates, all of whom passed the T Cole exam on their first attempt, which is quite an accomplishment. We're very proud of them. In the photo on the right, you can see the academy director, Lieutenant Cliff Osborne, and he is presenting awards to Officer Elise Cole from the Bell County Sheriff's Office. This amazing officer earned three of the four awards that are given to the class. She won top graduate, which is highest score, top gear, which is best on the driving course, and class president. And that position is chosen by classmates as the officer they would most like, and they would choose to have them back them up on a call. So watch out for Officer Elise Cole, because she is going to do amazing things. And as always, it was a great day, because graduation is the best day of the year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello to the board. I'm here to talk about the Welcome Back Bash, and as Dean Bach said, graduation is the best day of the year. Welcome Bash and the start of the school year is the second best day of the year. So anyway, last week, we had Welcome Bash on Thursday. We're celebrating an 80s theme. Students loved it. Our theme is "We'll Be Back..." dot, 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 for success. You have to say it like Arnold Schwarzenegger does in Terminator. "I'll be back, we'll be back for success" to really understand the theme. But anyway, so that was the theme. We had a great time. The first picture is a group of students taking a group picture, and back in the 80s, I'm sure some of you were in college back then, and we had party pics. You guys remember going to your parties and you had the photographer, and then they did the little border around your photo with your picture. Well, that's what this does, but it's digital and it's cool now. So the students are getting party pics, and what's really nice is they get to get that photo, and it's sent to their email or their social media, and then they get to post it on their own social media, and it has CTC all over it. So students are marketing CTC for us through that experience. The other three pictures are just students talking to faculty and staff at the resource tables that we had available. A lot of our faculty and staff chose to dress up 80s style, so we had leg warmers and blue eyeshadow and big hair, and you name it. It was a lot of fun. One of the evaluations from the students that we got from the Welcome Bash was, "This was a lot of fun. Can you do 90s next?" So hang tight, and you can hear my review about the 90s for the next go-round. We still are in Welcome Week this week. Today, we have bingo over in disability services. The library is doing 80s trivia, and then tomorrow, our counseling area is doing an open house, trying to increase visibility for that, so we still have a lot going. Questions?
Just a comment. Look at that group. There were no pictures taken back then, because they wouldn't allow it, because they knew it would catch up with the...
When I went to college in the 80s, yeah, we didn't have...
You didn't have party pics?
Oh, no, because we didn't want no one to know.
Am I the only one that did party pics?
I was in Tarrant County.
We had party pics in 1960s.
Thank you.
San Antonio Police Department has them.
Oh, I think that's a might be a different...
Now it's time for the interim financial statement and investment report. Mr. Barton.
Okay, so you have the room in December here. I'm going to jump to December since it's the most current. Your first page, your assets and your liabilities. And this page has become a little more complicated to look at with all the line items. If you took out all the deferred inflows and outflows and lines related to pensions and OPEB, what you have changed from the previous year is within your cash and investments, and it's down about $5 million, all of it resulting from last year. The other change is in accounts receivable, and that's simply the military's starting to pay. On your second page, up at your top section, you've got a change there, but that change is reflected down in your third section, your federal revenue non-operated, so it's really comparable. Your really changes on that page are with your state appropriations and your taxes and your investments, which you're doing better. And then your third lineup, you're doing a lot better than this time last year. So, and then investments, we're still seeing indications that rates are going to come down, so investments we've made have been out two, two and a half years. Trying to protect ourselves there.
Do you hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made. Second, questions? Do you favor the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Barton. Next item is putting Mr. Anderson to work now. The Braun and Butler Construction Corporation.
Good afternoon, chancellor and board members. I'm here to ask approval for multi-classroom renovation project. The college construction management at risk contractor Braun and Butler Construction submitted a guaranteed maximum price for the multi-classroom renovation project. The projects include the renovation of space in the buildings of nursing, allied health, protective services, science center, and related areas. In the assessment of pricing, Braun and Butler Construction submitted a guaranteed maximum price of $2,100,211. The total cost of the project, including 5% owner contingency, will not exceed $2,206,211. There's a breakdown of each building and GMP total, as well as 5% owner contingency, and not to exceed the total. There are two phases to the project, and we are looking at estimated time of completion would be late summer and be ready for fall semester of 2024.
Do I understand this as a budgeted item?
Yes, sir.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Carter, you have something for us about your travel schedule?
Just have a few trips scheduled for this spring, beginning today. I have a meeting. I was scheduled to be in Austin, but they provided a link to join virtually, so I won't have to run out immediately after today's meeting. And as the Texas Success Center Advisory Council, I was asked to serve a two-year term on the Texas Success Center Advisory Council to support the work of community colleges and establishing pathways for students. So that's an honor, and I appreciate the opportunity. And then the TAC meeting tomorrow in Austin is our regular quarterly meeting with the TAC board members. January 29th through February 1 is the Annual Council of College and Military Educators, or CCME as we commonly call it. It is the largest military education conference in the country, and people from both government and civilian communities come from not only the United States, but some who are overseas doing this work. They will be there as well. I was asked to serve on the president's panel and talk about CTC's history in serving the military and to ask a few questions, to answer a few questions for the good of the group. So I did agree to do that.
Where is that meeting? Okay.
Aurora, Colorado. And then Texas Pathways Institute, that is a twice-year institute to support the work of the Texas Success Center in establishing those pathways and supporting the talent strong strategy and initiative that is put forth by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board. So that's in Round Rock, Texas, so not too far. And that concludes... So at this time, I'm asking the board to approve.
Any questions? Board members about the travel schedule? Is there a motion?
Motion approved?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the travel schedule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is Mr. Weaver, the Texas Increment Reinvestment Zone reporter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The TERRS Board met in December and had two items which were approved. First item, bring your attention to, is the MGC Pure Chemicals America Incorporated, located at 4500 RJ Smith Drive. They're going to expand their plant to add construction for a pneumonia hydroxide manufacturing plant, and that facility will include ten new jobs and average $44,000 a year. Expected to be completed by May 2025, and they're asked, the TERRS number two, to commit $600,000 for rail spur, come off the rail line to provide services to the new facility. Anticipated that by the end of fiscal year '26, let's see, a total investment of about $89 million in that particular area. And the second one is an item for downtown Colleen. Again, I apologize, but your read ahead doesn't show the detail that mine does in color. But basically, what they're asking for is $300,000 to improve the sidewalk infrastructure between Avenue E, East Avenue B and East Avenue C, at 8th Street, at Gray Street, and at 4th Street, and then between Avenue D and Central Santa Fe Street Station, that whole sidewalk there in front of where the Wix is. All that improved will include improved access to the American Disabilities Act and some decorative railing along those four areas. And those items were approved by the council. This project is expected to be completed in fiscal year '26.
Thank you for that report, sir. Now the aviation.
It's good to see you again.
Yes.
So, a couple of months ago, we had a, asked the question, Mr. Weaver asked a question about the program, which is how do we accommodate more students? So we offered a couple of slides to show how we can achieve that. There's a couple of things that we got to discuss to understand how we can make that happen. So first thing is, for the program capacity, right now, we have 38 flight training seats, and we are, we have filled up every single seat that we can right now. The capacity is determined by the number of instructors, mechanics, and also the number of airplanes. So the reason why we bring mechanics here to the equation is because as the flight operations increase, then inspections also will start to come up as often or more often. And our idea is that we can have additional mechanics to help reduce ground time for those airplanes and to keep the airplanes flying more time or more often. So, the number of instructors, each full-time flight instructor can teach eight students concurrently per semester, and the current number of full-time flight instructors that we got is four. And we also have flight instructors who also serve as program in the program management, which would be Mr. Reynolds and myself. So we cannot carry a full load of students, but we do have students that we instruct on a weekly basis as well. What we would like to see is an increase of full-time instructors by two. In this case, would, as an example, increase to 54 students, our current capacity. So as far as the mechanics, the ratio that is recommended, and after talking to our mechanics as well about this ratio, is to have five or one full-time mechanic for each five aircraft that we have, and a part-time mechanic for each three aircraft that we have. So each can maintain that number of airplanes. The number of airplanes that we have right now is 12 in total, and we would also put into the equation here a number or a percent of aircraft that should remain available to have flexibility in case that we had a last-minute maintenance issue, to allow better reschedule and to reduce delays to the students. In conclusion, to increase our capacity, we would like to hire additional instructors, two additional full-time flight instructors, which in turn would bring 16 flight training seats each to our program capacity per year. The courses that would be impacted immediately because of this would be our private flight, intermediate flight, instrument flight, and commercial flight courses. In addition to that, as we talked about before, to hire one additional full-time mechanic and two complete replacement of the remaining Cessna 152s that we still have in the fleet. As you remember, we began that a year ago, and the airplanes are being assembled as we speak. That will bring us to a total of seven Vulcan Air V1s instead of three, which is the current number that we would have once the airplanes are completed. And if you have any questions about this, I have to answer.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
The full-time mechanic, the one with the Cessna, do we currently have, we do currently have Cessna mechanics, correct?
Yeah, so the mechanics are certified by the FAA, and they can do different types of models within that certification that they have, so.
It will, I mean, for this new position, will there be any new certifications that will be needed, or?
No, not for this time.
Do you have students waiting, the students you're counting on being able to fill the seats? Are they, they're waiting for an opportunity to attend class?
Yes. We do have a system that allows our students to compete and allows them to not wait as long as if it was a first come, first served type of enrollment. But yeah, we do have a good amount of students that will be able to fulfill those seats.
When you say a good amount, can you give me, give us a number? It doesn't have to be perfected, but it needs to be close.
Yes, so in, within this year, we had, well, not this year, I will use last year. I have a list of 45 students that were waiting to get in the program. This semester, we were able to bring in seven, for example. So having additional instructors would increase our semestral entry or enrollment.
Question. For clarification of the board, this is just a report.
Just a report.
The numbers that you're talking about expenditure would come at a later time for recommendation.
Yes, those are references.
Does the wait, oh, I'm sorry. Does the waiting list stay about the same number?
So it varies, obviously, when we have a student who's interested, like when someone applies for a job. So we tell them about the time period that they're going to have to wait before they can get selected, and sometimes the students may not, you know, wish to continue in that waiting list, but if we have more openings, we think that we're going to be able to capture more students when they come in for a first time asking for entrance.
It appears to me that the bottom line of this whole equation is the maintenance program. Without pliable aircraft, it doesn't make a difference how many instructors you got or how many students you got. So I would think that we would want to put emphasis on finding some mechanics.
Yes.
And getting some, whatever it costs. I don't know what a mechanic makes at Ford House, much less in aviation, but whatever it is, I think we as a board need to commit to the administration that that's what we need to look at. We need to make sure that we got pliable airplanes.
Yes.
And then the rest will come.
Yep.
Yes, so currently, Mr. Molina is working with Mr. Harmson and Mr. Barton in identifying funds and penciling this out, and so we're supporting this effort, and it is in the works.
Yeah, we're working very hard.
Thank you for all the good work you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
When is the lag time right now between maintenance right now? I mean, if it's...
So as a reference, one of the more common inspections that we have to undergo, or the airplane has to undergo, is a 100-hour inspection. With our current staff, it's about two days before the airplane can return. That is like, it doesn't seem as much, but when we have multiple airplanes that happen to have the maintenance inspection at the same time, it really hurts. And it does happen every now and then, and that's when we get, you know, customer service problems.
Huge lag. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Molina.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, you have a quarterly Title IX report for us.
Good afternoon, chairman, chancellor, board members. This afternoon, I give you the first reporting period, Title IX report for Central Texas College. Time period, September 1st, 2023 to December 31st, 2023. During this time period, we had two reports that came in for Title IX. One case was investigated, and after the investigation, it was dismissed because it fell outside of the scope for Title IX. We have one case that is pending investigation. As soon as some admin issues are cleared up, then we will proceed with that investigation. Over the last 12 months, we went on a vigorous campaign of educating faculty, staff, and students on the Title IX program, and we can see the benefits of that education program. At this time, are there any questions?
Anyone?
How often does an education program occur?
So it is, it's two phases. For faculty and staff, we try to hit them at every in-service. For new students, they're required by federal law and state law, if they're freshmen or transferring students, that they have to go through a Title IX briefing at the beginning of their semester, their first semester here. We also hit the students during new student orientation, and then at the beginning of each semester, I also talk to ECHS and take care of their students. students. I also do information tables either here or on Fort Cabasums, putting out information, and just try to reach as many people as we can.
Because you know that, I'm sure you know it, education has to be ongoing for people to keep us from having to do other things.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else, other questions? Thank you for the report, sir. Item eleven on the agenda has to do with the position, place for position on the board or the empty chair that we have, missing Mr. Beebe and his contribution to who we are as an institution, not only serving the institution and then serving on the board as well. But the process needs to take place appropriately. And I've asked our attorney to read into the minutes the appropriate board policy for us. Thank you, Tracy.
Sure. In board document one of four, which is the bylaws for the board, in section 3.03, it says that vacancies on the board shall be filled by appointment made by the Board of Trustees of the college district until the next regular election. At that time, a person shall be elected to fill the unexpired vacated term. And then in section 3.05, a little more specifically, to ensure a smooth transition in the event it is necessary to replace a board member, each remaining board member will be afforded the opportunity to nominate to the full Board of Trustees a replacement to assume a position vacated prior to completion of a normal term. Nominees will be requested to submit a resume for review by all members and to be available for interview prior to the board voting on their nomination. With majority Board of Trustees approval, their alternate, their alternate will serve until the next scheduled college district election, at which time the position will be placed on the ballot for the remainder of the elected board member's term. So just a couple of specifics on that. Mr. Beebe's term was set to expire in 2027, and your next regular election won't be until May 2025. So what this means is that you all will make an appointment to the board, and that person will serve until the next election next May. And then the person elected that year will serve until 27. And this is all also in compliance with the education code as well.
Any members of the board have questions for Tracy?
No, but I do have a recommendation for y'all to consider if you pass those down, sir.
These recommendations have been coming in, and it's my recommendation that we, according to the policy, that we ask people to nominate someone and attach a resume or a recommendation form, and that all of those go into the hands of Ms. Havens. And by January, by February the fifteenth, close the opportunity for those. Ms. Havens will then send a report to the entire board of names of people who have been recommended, and that she does in fact have resumes on file. And then the board will start the process of examining, evaluation, setting interviews if necessary. And so I recommend that to the board today, that the February fifteenth deadline, resumes to be assigned, or recommendations of resumes to be assigned to Ms. Havens and report come to the board shortly after that. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Second, discussion, questions, modifications to the process. The board approves that recommendation? Signify with saying aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
You can pass it down, Ms. Havens.
And so one has occurred. Item twelve, recommending any topics for upcoming agenda items. There is in the policy manual, by the way, an opportunity for the Chair of the Board to appoint people to certain positions. In the minutes of a couple of months ago, we reemphasized the statement of Assistant Treasurer. And so it's my pleasure to appoint Mr. Weaver to that position of Assistant Treasurer to serve. And the question that may come up about Mr. Beebe's leaving the board, having been the treasurer, we'll deal with that question when we finish selecting a replacement for Mr. Beebe. Okay. Ms. Cole, you have anything to put in?
Yeah.
Charles?
Yes, sir.
The next meeting will be Tuesday, February twentieth, 1:00 PM for a workshop and February twenty-seventh for the board meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please rise and walk away.